Supposed carried. Okay, next item is number three, declaration of cunary interest or general nature thereof. Does anybody have an interest to declare? I see no hands going up, so we'll move forward with the item number four, which is in camera and there is no in camera session this evening. And number five is delegations presentations and we have the medical officer from the Leeds Granville Landarch District Health Unit, Dr. Lena Lee. And we can, she is here in our chambers. So if you'd like to come to the podium, that would be great. Perfect.
Do I need to turn anything on?
It's nope, it's everything's on. You just need to make it to correct height. That makes it comfortable for you. All good.
Hi, everyone. My name is Lena. I am the, I guess, do I, how long do I get to say that I'm new? I I've been here for about seven months now as the medical officer of health for the Leeds Granville Landarch District Health Unit. So we serve the tri-county region. You may have known my predecessor who was Paula Stewart. And she had retired recently and so I was happy to be able to come back. I was actually here as a resident a number of years ago. And so I was familiar with the health unit and with the region and I was really eager to come back. So it worked out really well for me. Before I came here, I was at Toronto Public Health. And before that, at Grey Bruce Public Health, which is the Owen Sound Region. I'm really here just to introduce myself a little bit and to to mention a few brief things about the health unit. But really the focus is just to put some faces to some names, get to know the township. I am going to each of the different municipalities in our region to introduce myself really and also where I've been able to and I hope today to be able to stay for a little while and just see what what is going on with the different municipalities in our regions. What's the topic of conversation and get to know people? As to saying a little bit about the health unit, so as many of you know, the work of the health unit was really focused on COVID-19 for the past three years, but we're moving away from that emergency response phase where the health unit was largely focused on COVID-19 to the exclusion of other things. And now we're really moving COVID-19 into our usual work, which means expanding the work that we're doing to include the pre-pandemic stuff. So that includes working with municipalities back in the capacity that we were previously doing a lot of the the broad work. So during COVID-19, of course, we focused greatly on on pandemic response and vaccination and now going back to some of the the health promotion work, policy work, et cetera. So that's one element. The second is, of course, recovering a lot of our other usual work. So going back into schools, working back with other community organizations on the full scope of public health. And the last thing I want to mention is that we are going to be undergoing a strategic process or strategic planning process with a renewal of the strategic plan happening this year. And so we will be looking for responses and comments from partners, including and especially municipalities. So please keep an eye out for that. And I think that's really it in terms of things that I had to comment on. And I'll turn it back.
Perfect. Thank you, Dr. Lee. Does anybody have any questions for the doctor? Go ahead, Counselor Jameson, and then Counselor Fode.
Thank you for being here. We appreciate and we know we are aware of how busy that job is. And just to say that through the pandemic, I personally was very impressed with the response of the health unit and the organization building hockey arenas and getting people back. So it was a tremendous undertaking. The only question I have is really a comment to say that we are in desperate need of physicians. And I'm hoping that our health unit and our county will be part of seeking a solution to that challenge. This township is taking a specific initiative. We've formed a working group around this issue, as have some of the villages. So just bring that to your attention and hope that we can all work together to help everybody understand why you came, because this is such a great place to live.
Yes. May I?
Yeah, please go ahead.
Respond. I just, I want to be really careful because we have gotten a few responses about physician recruitment. And I want to be careful about the role of public health in in that work. So one is, of course, you know, as a physician myself, I'm happy to speak to what attracted me here and also my interest in the region and and sort of in my professional role. But as to the work of the health unit, really, there's not so much role in the health unit or public health in determining physician recruitment or even directly contributing to physician recruitment. It is the healthcare system rather than the public health system. Having said that, we are in active work. I know that there there are a number of working groups struck. And we've been working on understanding the distribution of physicians and what proportion of people are in need of primary care. And so that data work is something that we're happy to contribute to. And then if there's more specific requests and recommendations, then I'm happy to take that back to the team and see where we can go. Thank you.
Great. Counselor Fode and then Counselor Lucky.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you worship through you, Dr. Lee. Welcome, even though you've been here for a few months now. We're glad to have you in our presence. Leeds Granville Landarch Health Unit, as you well know, set the bar very, very high and number one in a multitude of of checkmarks during the pandemic, which is terrific. As we transition away from that pandemic situation, there's a lot of talk about mental illness. Can you enlighten us as to how we compare to previous? Is there a percentile or numbers to accommodate that? Thank you.
So unfortunately, we don't have more recent numbers on the mental health challenges and and mental wellness in our region. It is something that's very actively on our minds and is something that we've been talking about in the work of the health unit, especially knowing provincially that there's quite a bit of focus and interest in that as well. As to specific numbers, we are still waiting for, there there are provincial provincial surveys that are done on a cycle. And there was one survey that was done over the course of the pandemic, which we recently got numbers on, but don't have the reports yet. And so that I'm hopeful we'll be able to give some more specific information very soon. And that would be local regional data. Where we do have significant data gaps is beyond that survey. We don't necessarily have data gaps or data on on the full range of mental health challenges in our region. And there are some some challenges in in collecting new data locally that we're working through right now with partners.
And Counselor Lucky, go ahead.
Thank you, your worship, and it's true to the doctor. There's been some talk about some cutbacks in the in the health departments and amalgamation possibly of offices and other things. How exactly will that impact us as a local municipality?
Yeah, so there's a few things that I can comment on there. One is that there had been talk even before the pandemic. And I think very possibly within the past year at the provincial level about the term that was used as modernization or regionalization or amalgamation of health units. We have not heard anything specific as to whether the province intends to go forward with that. So that people may recall vague memories before pandemic, that there was talk of combining healthiness into, I believe, ten to fourteen different regions from our current thirty-four. So that has been raised again in general terms by the provincial government, who would be doing that work, but no specifics. And so I can't necessarily comment on what the province is intending to do, but we don't have any confirmation as to whether that would go forward. The other piece is regarding funding. And so this there's two elements that I'll mention. One is during COVID-19, all health units in Ontario did receive one-time COVID-19 funding on a yearly basis. We know that that is going to end this year. So this is the twenty twenty-three is the last year we'll have that. At the same time, we have had, as with, you know, such as the way of many publicly funded organizations, we have had growing costs at the same time as no additional funding, which practically speaking, ends up being a a cut to the amount of work that we can do day to day. And so that continues to be a challenge for us. Our principal funder in terms of percentage of funding comes from the province. And then there's a substantial portion that comes from municipalities as well. And so over twenty twenty-three, because we have that one-time COVID-19 funding and because we're transitioning from sort of pandemic emergency COVID-19 work to usual COVID-19 work, we do have some cushion for our funding for twenty twenty-three. For twenty twenty-four, maybe what I'll say as the funding for the health unit is still being actively discussed at multiple levels.
That was, you should be a politician. That was very well said. Have there any other questions for the doctor? Okay, well, we thank you very much for taking your time to come and introduce yourself. We thank you again for all the work that you do. I know I have a couple of colleagues from county council that sit on the board there that are very active as well. And we will look forward to getting any further updates in the future, hopefully not in regards to cutbacks and not into regards to amalgamation. We're very happy with the work that the health unit does.
Yeah, thank you and thanks for your time.
Okay, next item on the agenda is five point two, Katie Mahone, KPMG twenty twenty-two audit findings presentation. It's like Christmas. We always look forward to Katie's presentation to see our report card on how well we've done.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you to the committee for having me here today. I have to say that is one of the nicer ways to describe the audit. We don't often use those nice of words, but happy to be here to close the lid on fiscal twenty twenty-two. Before I get started, I am just going to take one second to share my screen. I believe I do have permission to do that. Here we go, should be popping up momentarily. Can I get a, yep, I see a couple of head nods. All right, so we're we're loaded up there. So what I will propose to do is run through our audit findings report. It was pre-circulated, so happy to take questions as we go through the report, or also we'll have some time at the end as well. Opening up, you can see on our audit highlights page, if you have had a chance to read through a lot of words on this page really to say it was a very clean and smooth audit with not a whole lot of significant findings. The one area to point out is this middle column bottom box, just around the newly effective auditing standard. So this is not unique to your township, not unique to any audit in Canada. There was a new auditing standard that came into play for this fiscal year. What auditing standards are is there are guidelines that set out how we go about planning and executing an audit. So to the extent there is a new auditing standard that comes into play, typically it's more of documentation requirement on our end rather than any change to a deliverable that you may see. That was such the case with this one. So at a very high level, the new standard that came in was around risk assessment. What it meant is that we had to ensure our audit files had a much more robust documentation around the areas that we have identified as a higher focus of having a potential risk of material misstatement, meaning that we have more thorough internal control analysis in our file. Typically, it led to higher sample sizes in our substantive testing. And then also having to go through and place a risk rating on those financial statement captions. Happy to say we did all that work. There was a slight increase, which I'm sure the team might have felt this year, again, in those higher sample sizes and a little bit more of a thorough documentation approach. But on the end deliverable here today, nothing, nothing substantively different to show to you. And then as I flip open, as we get into more of the meat of the report, I will just take a quick second to say a big thank you to the township team, specifically the finance team. Again, as you see, as we go through the report, not a whole lot of significant findings, which is really a testament to the high quality of the books that you are getting in year from your team. And audit really wouldn't be possible to go through as smoothly as it did without the cooperation of the team. So a big thank you to them. So this page here, page number five, around the status of the audit. So as of today, we are substantially complete the audit. We are just waiting on a few items. A quick update to the slide, one of the items does specify a legal letter. Happy to report we did receive that today from the township's lawyers, nice and clean. So we will be able to take that off so that once council approves the statements, we'll get our management representation letter signed and then we'll be in a position to finalize. I know this is probably a bit small, so we'll see if I can make it a bit bigger. But this is just a screenshot of the statement of financial position from the financial statements. As you can see, we have a bit of some commentary on the right-hand side. A really high level, just going from the top down. Township maintains a very strong cash position, just over eleven million. Taxes receivable are staying around that two-point-one to two-point-two million dollar mark. As a percentage of the total taxation, it is relatively consistent with the prior year. But it is a little bit on the higher end. So the ministry does put out some financial indicators of where they would like to see municipalities taxes receivable as a percentage of taxation is one of those financial indicators. They typically like to see it around the ten to fifteen percent mark. As you'll see later in the report, you're closer to around a twenty percent mark. So that is an area that will be of continued focus in twenty twenty-three. Across the board, we did see these percentages going up mainly as a result of COVID. So over COVID, there is some leeway over the payment terms. So as we are, you know, exiting COVID and coming into the more of the new normal, we are looking to see that percentage come down a little bit into fiscal twenty twenty-three and ultimately twenty twenty-four as well. The rest of the assets here really fairly consistent year over year. The only other item I will note just within accounts receivable is that there is a slight increase for some ISF funding that was receivable at year end that has since been received. Around the financial liabilities, again, just kind of going through top to bottom. Accounts payable, one point eight million versus the one point two million last year. Nothing overly significant to note there. That's really just timing of when invoices are coming in versus when they're paid. The accrued landfill closure and post closure, a slight increase there up to that two-point-four million dollar mark. The costs themselves, the estimated cost that we do get from the engineers, those did not significantly change. The the main driver of that increase was a result of some of the of the assumptions that go into that estimate being revised, namely the inflation percentage. So it was historically at a three-point-five percent and we did bump it up to a four percent for this fiscal year. And that's more aligned with your your peer group as well, so other municipalities in the area. And then after that, really the only other item I wanted to note within the financial liabilities is around the deferred revenue obligatory reserves. So this is where the OSF funding and the gas tax funding comes in. So as you receive those funds, those revenue, it increases the amount. And then as those funds are utilized, that's where we'll see the decrease. So any in-year change this year, it increased, meaning that there was more money received than utilized. And that's really just around the timing of when those projects are being completed. So overall, a net financial asset position of eight point six million, which is a very strong, strong position. Nice to see it's in the positives, especially again compared to the peer group in a in a relatively strong financial position there. And then just finishing off the balance sheet here, you have your other non-financial assets. So that's always your capital assets and your prepaid capital assets, the change year over year is a function of amortization, which decreases the balance offset by any additions that would increase it. And then you can see on the side there, we just have a couple of the key additions where the capital expenditures were completed this year. And then after that, we just have a few pages with some graphics. So page number seven here is just a pie chart on where the capital assets have been invested into. So as we would expect, linear assets, roads, bridges, take up almost half of the capital assets. And then buildings, equipment, making up the majority of the rest of them. Again, very consistent with what we would expect for a municipality. Reserves, a nice to see this trend. It is trending upwards, which is always nice to see. So just under ten million at the end of the fiscal year. As you would be well aware, so this year asset management planning did come into play. So one of the items we do always like to just touch on very briefly when we do talk about reserves is that reserves as a balance themselves is just a number, really looking at how those reserves factor into future planning. Asset management planning, strategic planning is a key financial governance piece to consider into the future. And then we do have, again, just a graphical depiction here, so reserves as a percentage of operating expenses. This is another one of those financial indicators the ministry puts out a bit of a decrease from last year, and that's really just a function of your total expenses for the year going up, not so much as the reserves coming down. As you can see, the reserves themselves did go up a little bit. Still just around that sixty-four percent, which compared to what the ministry puts out as a benchmark. So they like to see anything over twenty percent. So you are well over that twenty percent mark. So again, financially healthy based on that financial indicator. But again, now that we have all that great asset management planning data, again, always important to look at reserves, not only as they compare to operating, but to the future capital plays as well. And then this next slide here is just around the taxes receivable as a percentage of the current levy. So I already touched on this, just around the twenty percent. And then over the next few years, looking to get that closer down to the ten percent mark. And so then after that, we have a screenshot here of the income statement or the statement of operations. So again, I'll just touch on some of those highlights. We do have them noted over on the right-hand side as well. But from a property tax, taxation, user charges, very consistent with prior year and with budget, government grants, you can see there one point three million, a slight decrease from last year's one point five. That's mainly due to some COVID funds that were received last year, mainly the safe restarts that did not reoccur this year. License and permits, they continue to go up. That six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar number mainly a result of the continued increase in building permits that we see coming through the township. And then the other item I wanted to note in revenue, because it sticks quite a bit this year, is in that other category. So one point two million was about six hundred thousand last year. That's where we see those casino funds come in. So in twenty twenty-one, due to COVID, the casino was closed for just under half of the year. So this year from twenty twenty-two, it was open for the full month of the year. So we do see that balance come back up to a full twelve months worth of funds. And then from an expenses point of view, so overall, overall expenses have gone up in line with revenues as we would expect. The biggest increase is around the protections to persons of property, which is really just a function of the number of employees, so the headcount in that department, as well as some increased training, where training had been either done virtually or had been delayed due to COVID in the past back in twenty twenty-two, getting back to more of the in-person training. And then also, if you do have the statements in front of you, just a reminder that note sixteen does break down the expenses by segment, which would be by salaries and wages, by materials, which is what we have on this next page here, amortization. So you can get a sense of where those increases are coming through in the current year. The majority of them are coming through in the salaries, which is in benefits again as a function of headcount as well as like cost of living increases as well. And so then after that, into more of the audit side of the house, so from an audit materiality standpoint, so materiality is an important audit concept. Materiality is set by us as auditors, but we do follow the Canadian auditing standard guidelines. So for a municipality of yourselves, they do suggest looking as a benchmark at either revenues or expenses. We have set it on expenses similar as to current years, anywhere from a point five to a three percent range. So we've done that and set a materiality at that three hundred and thirty thousand dollar mark. That is a quite a large number. So that is our aggregate materiality. The other number you see up there, the sixteen thousand five hundred, that's what we refer to as our posting threshold. So to the extent that as you went through the audit, we saw any differences or came across anything in extent of that number, that's when we would have those discussions with management to see if there was any adjustments needed. Very happy to say there were no corrected adjustments that we put through the statements this year, which again, really speaks to that top-notch quality of the books and records throughout the year. We did have a small number that we did leave unadjusted. It was well below materiality. It was around the sixty thousand dollar mark. And it related to a timing difference of one of the the grants that was coming through. So that will be reported in the twenty twenty-three fiscal year, which was when it was received. So after that, we get into the controlled deficiency slide. So as a part of the audit, we are required to gain a thorough understanding of the internal control environment. And to the extents, we had identified any significant deficiencies, would be required to bring those to your attention here today. Happy to know no significant deficiencies. Did we identify some? Nothing to flag in that regard. Historically, we have provided a management letter with some more best practice or kind of efficiency observations. But we didn't have any new observations this year and we were able to close a number of the ones from the prior year. So we have provided that separately to management, but the highlight really being there is nothing new came forward out of this year's audit. Then this next page around significant risks and results. So each audit in Canada is required to have a significant risk built into the audit plan in relation to the fraud risk from management override of controls. Again, not unique to yourselves or to municipalities. It is required in each and every audit. And so this page really just goes through what that risk is, the procedures that we've planned in our audit, which is under the our response column there. Or sorry, our response row. At a very high level, we get the full GL for the year. We throw it through a software based on high-risk criteria and certain data points that we enter into. It generates a sample. We then take that sample about it back to supporting documentation to make sure all the proper approvals and the supporting documentation receipts are all in good order. And then under the findings row, you can see certainly nothing to bring to your attention in that regard either. From a significant accounting policies and practices, nothing new on the new accounting standards to bring to your attention. The financial statements, notes and presentation, very similar to what you would have seen in the past. So no new changes to flag there. And then in terms of other financial reporting matters, before we get into the appendices, really the only item to note here is a new accounting pronouncement that is expected for the fiscal twenty twenty-three year. And that's around asset retirement obligations. I'll hold on that for a second because we do have some more documentation on that in the appendancy that I will I will circle back to in a second. So then after that, we really just have these four four different appendices. I won't go through them in too much detail, but I will just flip through them quite quickly and then stop in appendix number two to talk about asset retirement obligations. Appendix one is around other required communications. So if you do have this electronically, these are live links. If you click them, they will take you to our annual quality reports. We then have an excerpt of our draft auditor's report. As you can see, a nice clean opinion, which is what we would expect to see. So nothing, nothing new or different there. And then appendix two, so this is where we have the future accounting pronouncement. So this first one here on asset retirement obligations is coming into effect, like I said, in twenty twenty-three. We do also have another one coming in for twenty twenty-three around financial instruments. However, this one is not expected to have a significant impact really, if any. So, you know, won't won't spend too much time talking about it. Whereas asset retirement obligations is expected to have a relatively significant impact to the statements. Whereas asset retirement obligations is expected to have a relatively significant impact to the statements. This page here just has a couple more that are coming in in 2024. Again, not expected to have a significant impact, so I won't go through them in detail. But then starting on page twenty-five here, this is where we've included a couple more slides on information purposes around the asset retirement obligations. So really what this is at a very high level is if there is any legal obligation to remediate any lease contracts, any underground fuel storage tanks, any buildings that were built with hazardous materials. The standard specifically outlines asbestos. There is a requirement to assess what that cost is going to be to remediate those assets into the future and then put that amount on as a liability on the financial statements. So between hospitals, which have March thirty-one year ends, so they're currently going through this exercise right now. School boards, which have August thirty-one year ends and a lot of buildings as well as the hospitals and the municipalities, which come in at December thirty-one, also with a lot of historical buildings are anticipating there to be, as they say, a fairly significant number coming in, a number that we're seeing come in from the hospitals right now. And just noting they typically have less buildings than the municipalities are hovering around the materiality threshold. So each one, each municipality will be different. It will depend on you know, the scope of the assets in play, the age of the the assets in play and you know, whether or not there had been any recent renovations or not. So this page here just kind of outlines some of the risks. And then we have a couple pages that just go around kind of what are the initial thoughts, what are the initial scoping exercises to look at. I can tell you from a practicality standpoint, what the majority of the municipalities have done is they're letting the hospitals go through this first. So they're working mainly with the Ministry of Health. The Ministry of Health has provided some templates to use to reduce the cost of having to go hire outside consultants. The Ministry of Education is up next with those school boards. And so your ministry is really been a little bit silent to wait and see what happens with these these other public sector entities, but full anticipation is that there will be some guidance coming out this summer and then we'll be in contact with the finance departments late summer, early fall to try and get out and do a lot of this work before the end of the fiscal year. So the hope being that when we come for audits next year, this is kind of all said and done. I won't disrupt any of the timing of the regular audit. And then after that, we just have a appendix around technology again. I believe on this appendix one, there's a couple life links that can take you to some more information. And then the last slide here, appendix four. This is really just a slide, again, lots of life links, everything that's underlined will take you to some more reading. But this is really just to give you a bit of a scope of some of the publications that KPMG puts out that you do have access to if you're looking for some additional readings. I'm sure you don't already have a lot of reading that comes your way in this role, but often we do get asked if I only have five, 10 minutes, what's the best one to look at? I would point your attention to this accelerate one. It is a national publication that KPMG puts out globally. It is refreshed annually and it is a fairly condensed summary of the top three to four emerging trends or topics that we're seeing across audit committees, finance committees, boards, councils across the country. So it touches on things like cybersecurity, which which isn't overly new, but staff retention, ESGs on there, privacy, those sorts of items. So with that, I'll stop sharing my screen and happy to take any questions.
Thank you very much. Okay, any questions for the auditor? I have one hand up. Go ahead, councillor Foddy.
Thank you. Excuse me. Thank you, your worship, through you. Can we go back to the line items of of person and protection, I believe was itemized on?
Yes, maybe I'll bring up the statements that are a little bit clearer. Reject me to share my screen again?
Please, if you can.
Think this is probably a little bit larger and more clear for everybody to see. This line item here.
This one, that's revenue. I'm looking for expenses, protection of persons of properties. The numbers seem to jump around largely from an actual of four million to a budget of thirty-eight and then back up to forty-six. Just exactly what is that? Is this insurance? Is this fire protection? Is it both?
So I'm happy to answer. I don't know. I think Kate is
Kate is here. Kate's just coming to the podium.
Hi, yeah, through your worship. So protection of persons of property includes fire and building departments as well as our police contract, the conservation authority, emergency preparedness. So it actually includes a bunch of different things. So when you're looking at budget, the hard part about budget to actuals and the accrual-based statements is budget does not include amortization expense. So there are some differences that the budget doesn't, isn't always going to really align really closely with the actuals. There were some significant increases in staffing in the billing department, as we know, and as well as some increases in staffing costs for volunteer firefighters that did cause some of the increase year over year in the actuals.
Does that answer?
Sorry, could you repeat that last part?
So if you look at year over year on the actuals, there were increases with building department staff, right? We've increased our number of staff as well as the volunteer firefighters, the pay that we incurred for 2022 was higher than 2021. I think that was introduced in a different council report and due to the number of fire incidents and calls and so on, that the staffing budget was up. The staffing actuals were up, sorry, in 2022.
The totals were up, not, we know the individual rate was was lower, but the totals were higher because of more firefighters, perhaps.
More more calls, I think.
Right, combination. Okay, because I just saw a swing of eight hundred thousand dollars there from the budget to, you know, to the actual, it just seemed to be an oddity in a way.
I think the other thing is the segmented information that Katie's now sharing on her screen. And or if you look at our budget to actual report, that's also included as an attachment in the council report that we'll be reviewing. It's it's broken down a bit more like you would normally look at. The accrual base basis that's used in the financials, like I said, it does have some differences that may impact our budget to actual kind of comparison compared to what we normally look at on a quarterly basis.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I may, oh, go ahead.
Just add to that, just to highlight the segmented here that's on the screen. So as as Kate mentioned, you can see that we have fire, police, and it's broken down a little bit more. And really the increases, as you mentioned, fire up quite a bit and then building permit up quite a bit. And when I looked at it, broken down by the category by so by salaries, interest, materials, it's all within this line really.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions for the auditor? Okay, I think that you'll be let off the hook. But I just want to say that we really appreciate the due diligence, obviously, that you bring to the table and our, we appreciate the staff who who step up to the plate. I know this audits are never fun. Doesn't matter how well prepared you are for them and and that's not anything against you personally. But I know it makes things go a lot smoother when everybody's prepared. So we thank the staff here and we thank you for for being our partners. So seeing no other comments or questions, I don't see any questions from the gallery or any of the participants that are online. Okay, so we'll move ahead with our staff reports.
Well, thank you, everybody. Enjoy the rest of your meeting.
Thank you. Okay, so we'll move forward with number six, six point one, corporate services report SR dash zero six three dash twenty-three draft 2022 audited consolidated consolidated financial statements for approval. And the motion comes forward from councillor Gurrell and councillor Lackey that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve the 2022 audited consolidated financial statements. And that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve the 2022 audited trust fund financial statements. And that the committee of the whole recommends that council approve the transfer of the 2022 surplus in the amount of seventy-nine thousand six dollars to the working fund reserve fifty percent and the contingency reserve fifty percent. So discussion on the motion. Go ahead, councillor.
And thank you through you, your worship. I just have two quick questions. And the first would be get up the page here, consolidated statement of financial position, and it would be under non-financial tangible capital assets. In the report, it states it it highlights that there were a few increases, I forget the exact numbers, but it highlights Sealy's Bay and the Ivy Lee Wharf and so on. And so my question is, when we receive an upgrade to an asset over of over half a million dollars from private donors, I I'm not sure it gets put into the financial tangible capital assets. And I'm referring specifically to the Rockport Customs Dock. Because it wasn't grant money, it was sort of built away from the township's eyeballs. But it was over six hundred and fourteen thousand, of which township put in a hundred thousand. And so I'm just wondering, is that in this report, if we were to expand the thirty-seven million dollars, do I find five hundred thousand dollars in there? Is that an asset that was accounted for and is it important that or does it matter to anybody? Thank you. That's the first question. Second question, if I might continue, deals with the fire service and specifically the training center. And I believe it's just a accounting issue, just. But it shows that we have higher revenue by a considerable amount over previous year. But it also, it seems that a large chunk of expense was transferred over there. It went, I forget the exact number, splits around two hundred and seventy-six thousand this year for expense. And therefore, it shows a tremendous increase in the deficit of the training center. And we had, of course, hoped and talked about for years that the training center would pay for itself and at least break even, you know, because we understand it's a valuable asset. But when I look at the numbers, it's very discouraging and I do appreciate well, actually, if you could just give me a better explanation than what I'm thinking. So those are my two questions. Thank you.
Through your worship. So on your first question, just to point you to, so for TCA, tangible capital assets under note fifteen, which is on page sixteen of the financial statements, it actually breaks down the the tangible capital assets into is greater detail. It's still pretty high-level summary. So it doesn't, for example, identify the Rockport Customs Dock specifically. And I will have to take that away and just make sure what is actually recorded for that particular asset. But this does give you a breakdown of the asset classes, which then tie to citywide with all of our individual assets. So just to be to be clear though, if there there was that much work done to that Rockport Customs Dock that and it then it should have been recorded as a contributed capital asset. So if it wasn't, I will definitely reach actually to Katie and make sure that that is picked up in the next, in the 2023 financial statements. I won't be here. That can definitely be
It really just brought to light if there are considerable donations, hospitals do it every day, twenty million dollar campaign in Brockville, of which my wife was a big part of, millions raised. Surely that shows up in the capital assets. So something as insignificant as something in the Rockport Dock, I would hope would be represented. And that brings us to the fire services question.
Yeah, and so through your worship. So and I mean, in municipalities too, where there is, when there's subdivisions built and then they end up becoming township, roads, sidewalks, they're contributed assets as well. So like, that is a normal kind of process that does happen, that if there's capital work done by other people and it ends up being our asset, it is contributed capital, it should be recognized on on our book. So that's a good question. On the training center, yes. So kind of along the same lines, but not quite the same as like the building department, where we're now trying to budget allocate our overhead costs, what portion of costs for facilities, trying to make sure that because again, like the building department's supposed to be self-funded, so that the rates, so to make sure that the rates are actually covering the total cost, not just kind of the direct cost, but the indirect costs. We also looked at the fire training center and in speaking with the fire department, if I asked what kind of percentage of time was spent by staff on the training center, and I did allocate that in 2022 actuals. So if you look at like our budget to actual report that we normally kind of look at, the whole, the total costs in that fire grouping won't have changed as a total, but I did take some salary costs that would have gone into fire admin and moved them down to the fire training center, because that's where the time was spent to try to get a more transparent picture of actual costs.
So again, it's it's an accounting thing. In a sense, it doesn't change the big, big number, but it does reflect on the training center. And since I came on council, that was one of the big items that kept cropping up. How are we paying? Is it worthwhile? I fully support the training center. It's just, it's discouraging to see that revenues have gone up. But in a greater ratio, so have expenses. So does that imply that we have to charge more money? Does it, is it going to fluctuate greatly next year when perhaps some of that certification training takes a nosedive, doesn't have to be done? It's discouraging to see that. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Thank you, worship and through you. It is discouraging to see a deficit of a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars, but we're getting better data so we can make informed decisions about the training center. This in 2022, there was a substantial amount of staff time put towards developing programs to meet the certify certification requirements. I know the fire chief is working on a report that's going to come to council on the training center and just what's been going on with it and and sort of some facts and 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 numbers and all of that. Of course, the 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 advantage of having the training center is it with the certification requirements that came in with the province, there's an awful lot of scrambling out in the training industry to get programs up and seats available for training. By having our training center up and running and have NFPA and OFC certified courses, we can make sure that we are training our firefighters to those standards and getting certifications and meeting the provincial requirements and meeting taxpayer needs. So it's 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 a cost for sure. We have a better idea of what the costs are with the allocation of salaries and debt and overhead and so on. Every course that we have, I want it to contribute towards those costs. So so it makes sense to be running programs through it for sure. In my mind's eye, I think we need to get through these these the certification requirements over the next few years. And then take another look at the training center and see what the requirements are. As far as capital, the the Drager unit is coming to the end of its life. It's expensive to maintain. Is there a need for it or a business case to be made for it? Or are there other ways that we can roll out training? That meet the needs of the firefighters and the certifications and all of that stuff. So so it's something that is definitely on our radar and it's nice to see more wholesome numbers on what the training center costs are so that we can make informed decisions going forward.
That answers it. I would say, yes, thank you very much. That's very wholesome explanation.
Thank you. Councillor Jameson, then councillor Foddy.
To your mention of a report coming with respect to this, it wouldn't appear in an odd statement because speculative it wouldn't. But the whole balance where we were to need to ship our people out to be trained, I think in the context of report, looking at how we're become more efficient.
looking at how we're become more efficient and more effective, it would be interesting to see what the cost would be if we took, say, a significant number of people that were trained here and sent them away to be trained and find out what that number would be. Not saying it would balance or even calm us to, to the issue, but at least it would give us some perspective as to what the option would be if we cease to run a training center.
Just spoiler alerts for the report coming because I've been looking at an early draft of it. In 2022, we had 86 firefighters and officers attend courses at our RTC. If we didn't have the RTC, we would be sending those away, those people away and paying for it and all the travel expenses and all that. And then there's the natural hesitancy on people who don't want to travel and be away from their families or take time off of work to go to another training center, wherever it happens to be. Of those 86, 46 officers and firefighters attained a level of certification. So that's quite an achievement and it's, it's nice that we had, since we had the programs offered in our backyard here and we gave priority to our fire service members. There wasn't the scramble and the time that takes to find programs with available seats that we could send people to. So there's also a savings on that side of things as well. And we're, we're assured that we're getting our people trained appropriately to meet the requirements of the province going forward. So it's a cost. And I guess the thing in is, you know, is, is it worth it to the township to run a deficit on this? I am hoping through next year or this year, since we've got our programs developed, we're not going to spend as much staff time developing programs, which is what we had to do last year. And things will become more efficient. We'll look for a little more cost savings wherever we can. And I would love for us to chip this down to a break even point. I'd be absolutely delighted if we broke even. But it's a long road when you see, you know, we're in a 25, $127,000 deficit and the training center had probably its busiest year ever last year.
Okay, go ahead. Follow up. Any follow up? Sorry, Counselor Jameson, Counselor Fody, go ahead.
Thank you, worship through you. I'll just say it. Quite frankly, I don't like where this discussion is going. We came from this precipice about three years ago. Most of you department heads weren't even here. We were walking down a tight rope of having Ward Two insurance rates increase. I believe the number given to us was 8%. Knowing most insurance companies, I'm sure that was a very soft approach. We got to be awful careful here because what you don't have in these numbers is how many firefighters you're going to lose if you start sending them away for five or 10 weekends a year. I don't know, like, quite frankly, I don't think you can take this as a dollar and cents approach. You have to take it as a community service approach of having the top notch firefighters we have now. Given their equipment, given the stations, given the management and everything they've accomplished. What I like when I drop in there unannounced, which I do from time to time, is the camaraderie that's going on there among our firefighters. I think it emboldens them and gives them a sense of authority, if you will, that they've accomplished these levels to the point where they can teach other jurisdictions who haven't gotten there yet. I think it, and furthermore, while they're teaching these other jurisdictions, be it Stormont or Elizabeth Town Kitley or Next Door, it, it, they're also training themselves. While they're doing that teaching, it's a refresher course for them. And I don't know, like, Mr. CAO, you yourself had made a couple of comments here a minute ago, the Drager unit is reaching the last of its days. And we have to look at it as, as the future. I don't want to go back to the future. We had that three years ago. And what we're going to end up with is a, is a real down drop in, in our firefighters. That's what my fear is. And it, it's taken three years to get us where we are now. And I know from talking to various members of the fire department, there will be X number of recruits sign up, 20 or whatever the number may be, but there's only 12 or 14 actually graduate for a number of reasons. And that's understandable. But this bit about using dollars and cents to quantify the training center, if that's what it's all about, we can close it tonight. I'll leave it at that.
Oh, I, I think that this actually went a direction that wasn't intended by the comment that was made by the CAO. I won't speak for you, Mr. CAO, but the point I believe it was made is trying better understand what the deficit is this particular year and why it's changed so drastically year over year. And we have a number of recruits that have to be trained over the next two years, I believe it is. By 2026. So I don't think any decisions will be made one way or the other in regards to whether the training, the training center exists or doesn't exist for at least another couple of years because we know what sort of position we're in. However, we can't, we also have to be pragmatic from the point of view that the Drager unit alone that exists on that particular, it might just change what sort of training happens, but I believe that the Drager units itself is close to a million dollars to replace. So these are things that we have to take into consideration over the long term. However, no decisions being made about that tonight. The question was asked about the change and the change in the, the allocation of funds. And I think that was answered, Counselor Garell.
Yes.
Correct. So, and no decisions are being made are on the table there.
No, 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 there's, there's, there's nothing coming to council on it to be or not to be as far as the RTC is concerned. Counselor Fody's points are all very valid and very well taken. I know in the three years that I've been here at the township, the morale and, and, and the cohesiveness of the fire service has increased dramatically. I, I credit Chief Pryor and his team for building that rapport and, and changing the, the, the mojo of the fire service. And perhaps Chief Pryor can speak a little bit towards that and what's going on.
I also recognize the Director Tyndall is up at the mic as well. Is there something you wanted to add to the money part?
Sorry, through your worship, I just wanted to be clear. So, I mean, whether council chooses to have the fire training center or have one Jesse Street or have any facility that, I mean, the whole point that I've been working on and Dave and I've been working on is trying to get the costs associated with those facilities to a place where you, where council and residents can see how much revenue we're bringing in from a facility and how much it's actually costing. So that's why we're trying to allocate the costs associated with the training center, like any other facility to that particular line item. And the other thing to keep in mind is the million dollar trigger unit, for example, or any other capital work that's done at that facility right now would come out of our capital reserve fund, which is being funded by property tax money. So the building permit reserve fund, for example, would fund building assets if we had a building vehicle that was purchased. But right now there is no separate reserve fund for the training center. So just want to be clear, there's nothing, I'm not against the training center. I just think it's important that everybody understands the cost and where the money's coming from, so that we can make informed decisions on it.
Absolutely fair. Go ahead, Chief. You had something to add.
Through your worship, yes. And with the training center, unfortunately, speaking with the Director of Finance or Corporate Services, none of the wages were ever taken out of, of the, like the operations and moved into that. Even when I was hired as Deputy Chief, that was still in administration, the end of it. So what we've tried to do is, is give, give a clearer picture. The other thing that we had done in 21 was we had taken half of the, half the mortgage basically payment and moved it into the, into the station four. But speaking with Kate after that, we, we moved it back in. So that's also another 20,000 on top of it. So it's the money's not higher, it's just moved into a different spot. So those, those wages are, are still being paid the same amount. There's no extras on that. It's just where it's coming out of. And to the point of the CAO's point, as far as with our training, this year, again, we've, we've been putting a lot of people through the training center with our certification courses. We've been putting people that couldn't make our training sessions at the RTC. They've just spent, I've had four people or sorry, three people did their fire one now in Mallory Town as an offsite. It's not that hard to get people to go to Mallory Town to, to do it, but as I've been going through my reporting and you'll, you'll find out more as we go on, but there's only certain places carry some of these courses like Clarence Rockland and Grimsby. And those are both places that you have to go away for five weeks and take Fridays off and hotels and everything else. So yeah, that, that cost is, is quite high. So I'll have my report hopefully all put together for next week and we'll give you a little bit more information on what the status of that is.
We very much look forward to that report. Counselor Jameson, go ahead.
Just, just to say that I agree with everything the counselor, what he said, your worship, and with the CAO said and what Counselor Garell said.
Very agreeable person this evening. Thanks for being so agreeable.
But I think, you know, audit is taking a picture at a point in time and we're seeing an outcome. And now we're all looking at it and saying, is, it looked muddy to me, looking at the detail. So you look at an audited thing and you realize, okay, it's, to me it was muddy. And now I'm hearing we're going to take a look at it, clean it up and make sure we actually know what we're doing with it in a, in the context of huge change, not to go through the detail again, but huge and positive change. So I agree, we're here to worry about the money. And, and the fire service is there to get the morale up and get the people trained and out there. So it's correct that we have an expectation, of course, that we're balanced, but and we're looking at whether it's an investment or whether it's a revenue generator. I never understood that because training people but with very highly trained people to train other people to a high level is not a cheap undertaking and very few organizations really make any money doing that. So I think, you know, let's find out what we get in the reports that come forward. But in the meantime, I, I don't, I worry that the headline is going to be, you know, training center loses money. And I don't think that's the impression we want to leave. I think the impression is we've got some work to do to understand how to break it all down and present council with something that we can understand better. Thank you.
I'm just very grateful that where we started from versus where we're, we're at now is, is a very big different picture. And when I made my offhanded remarks with the auditor, it's like Christmas, but I, I'm going to save my remarks till the end, but I'll explain myself later. Are there any other comments or questions in regards to the audit of financial statements and the, and the surplus that we're talking about here in the motion? Go ahead, Counselor, maybe.
Thank you, worship and through you. My question comes from the Lansdowne landfill and that it does state that it has eight years left. Yeah. Sorry, it's small print. But it also has the closure cost at 934,000. And I know that we recently engaged Fast Eddy to do some work there that which potentially will extend its hours or its years of operation. So whether, whether there's some more information that can come to light mainly because of the amount of
What page are you looking at?
Let's see, I think it says 34, number 12, landfill closure and post closure liability.
Go ahead.
Through your worship. So I just, I, I, I know that Director of Operations has been doing some work to to, to the landfills. Now, keeping in mind, again, this is an estimate at December 31st, 2022. So anything that was determined after that wouldn't necessarily be reflected in the, the calculation. But these are numbers that the consultant that Dave works with provide to us and it goes into a spreadsheet, which calculates based on a bunch of formulas, what these estimated costs are. So very much an estimate in the statements to try to identify what the potential possibly would be going forward. So I'm not even sure if, if you can tell.
I'll recognize the Director of Operations so that he can give some more specifics.
Yeah. Thank you through your worship. So I, I have just received the annual monitoring report in draft form that has been submitted to the ministry. We have four to five years of capacity currently. I, I think the information that's been provided to the Director of Finance is, as you know, we, we'd undertaken a survey of, of the back portion of the, the landfill, the, the closed portion of it. And the ministry has indicated that there is an opportunity for us to open that up and do similar to what we've done at, at Ascot. We have not completed that work as of yet because we're looking at, at other alternatives as well, including mining of the, the metal and, and rock and all those types of things out of the, the existing landfill. So the high level, just based on the survey, says that we have approximately seven to eight years of capacity remaining there. But like I said, before we, we break ground and get in there, I want to make sure that we are maximizing what we can reclaim from that wayside or at least explore our options at this point. So that's, that's the information that I do have on, on Lansdowne.
Just a follow up, please. The amount of 934,000 for closure, what does closing a landfill actually pertain?
So we have to put a final cover on everything and make sure that it's capped. And then we also have our long-term monitoring plans as well, similar to what we have with Leeds and what we have with Reynolds Road, where we, we put the final cap on and we make sure that everything is encapsulated and stays where it is. And then after that, we, we do our annual monitoring and, and go from there.
The, sorry, another follow up, the, the cover that's actually on the landfill now, so that isn't the final, it's just, just to keep it encapsulated and not blowing around, I guess, then.
So a, the closed portion of our landfills, that is the final cover on them. So that's the, the impervious clay material that we have on there so that we reduce the amount of leachate that, that will leave the, the site.
So like, like the landfill at Lansdowne, over half of it is closed now then. So this, this remaining money estimate is for the remaining 50%?
Correct, along with the 30-year monitoring of the site as required.
Okay, thank you.
I think it really is more than monitoring that costs over time as well. Malros is a, has been a great partner and a very beneficial one. Counselor Fody.
Thank you, worship through you. I wanted to catch the Director of Operations before you sat down. Are you allowed to speak to the optical changes on the Reynolds Road waysite this past week? There's fluorescent paint in a number of locations there, and I just wonder what the indication was for.
For the Reynolds Road waysite?
Yes.
That would likely be for the reporting they, they've done. We still do monitoring at that location. I would assume that's what it's for, but I will reach out to the consultant and find out if we've done something.
Well, to be specific, there's one pipe they, they painted fluorescent orange, but they've also painted the rock and appearingly the top of the drainage pipe to the northwest of that as well. Is there an indication they're going to change that or remove it? Because the wayside is considered redundant now, right?
Yes, it's redundant, but we do have to continue to do our monitoring out there.
Right.
Painted orange, it could be to, to just mark key items that are at the waysites that we don't hit them. I could be establishing where the benchmarks are so that you can transfer elevations from one spot to another. I, I'm not sure, but I'll have to reach out to the, the consultant and find out what exactly we've done out there.
Well, it was all brushed off just a couple of weeks ago.
Okay.
So that, and then with this marking paint, as I call it, that just indicated there was a movement of foot of some sort.
Okay, I will look into it and report back to council.
Counselor Jameson.
Just, just back to the audit for a minute. I just want, you know, through the year, we had to make some changes or staff came and said, we're going to pull this out. We had inflationary problems. So all the things through the year has brought us to the end and this audit and basically an $80,000 puck in the net, which is hugely amazing that this has happened. So I just want to make sure, your worship, that we, we don't end the discussion on some of the details we're all concerned about, of course, but this was one heck of a performance. And I, I really feel the team deserves, deserves our, you know, a great deal of credit. Thank you.
Well, you stole all my thunder. Sorry, not sorry. I just wanted to say that if you look at it, if we're going, going back to the main question that is on the floor right now, which is about transferring the surplus, approving the audit in principle and transferring 50% of the, of surplus of $79,006 to working fund and 50% to contingency. To operate a $15 million budget within a half a percent is astounding. I know last year we were set up to be wowed with a 20,000 Uh, I know last year we were set up to be wowed with a twenty thousand dollar surplus, fifteen of which was for the library board. And, you know, operating a budget within five thousand is it's unheard of. But I think it speaks to not just the treasurer, the Director of Corporate Services, but also each and every one of the senior managers that work in their respective departments because they all have worked hard and diligent to stay as best they can within the budgets they've given. However, when there's unexpected needs that have come up and you can see in the report that we've had some overages and some operational departments and we've had some overages and some fire, but at the end of the day, we can balance it out throughout the year. Says a lot about how the team works together. So it is Kate's last budget with us. And we know that we've been put on a road through asset management and planning financially over the long term that will serve us very well. Um, but you've set the bar very high and we thank you for that. And I'm hopeful that our paths will cross again in the near future. But thank you for leaving a legacy of of reconciliation, if you will. So thank you very much. I will call the question. All those in favor? All those opposed? And it's carried. Next item on the agenda is operations support SR dash zero eight seven dash twenty three Lansdowne Growth and Infrastructure Upgrades Memorandum. And the motion comes forward from Counselor Lackey and seconded by Counselor Gurrell that the Committee of the Whole recommends that counsel receive the Lansdowne Growth and Infrastructure Upgrades memorandum as provided by J L Richards, that the Committee of the Whole recommends that counsel authorize staff to proceed with an amendment to increase the permit to take water, P T T W, for the Lansdowne Water System with the Ministry of Environment Conservation and Parks. And that the Committee of the Whole recommends that counsel counsel authorize staff to proceed with the hydro geological study to determine what that suitable groundwater exists to accommodate future growth. And that the Committee of the Whole recommends that counsel allocate a budget of up to a hundred and eighty thousand dollars from the Water Reserve Fund to fund the hydro geological study. So the motion is on the floor. Um, I'll just preface it by saying that the report that was provided to us detailing the needs of what we need to do, per se, was a hard slug, so very technical, very, very important detail, obviously. Um, but I think that the Director of Operations, who's been working hard along with the Director of Planning in regards to future developments. Um, this this amount of detail is very important for us to make decisions going forward. So with that, do I have any questions or comments in regards to this? I'll have Counselor Lackey, then Counselor Fodi.
Thank you, Worship, and I would agree wholeheartedly with you. It was a very good report. Even though it was written in the wee hours of the morning. Um, a great effort. I think it's a great place to get started. Um, we have to know what we're going to have available to get the ball rolling within this community. And this is when I I have money well spent, in my opinion.
Counsel Fodi, go ahead.
Thank you, Worship, and through you, I agree with Counselor Lackey. Uh, it's a pretty intriguing report. There's a lot of information here and you could really get deep into some of this and quite frankly, get scary into some aspects of it. But the long and the short of it is we have till twenty twenty four before we tap out our water supply, based on the current growth and and usage we have now. So I I agree with Counselor Lackey. I think the indication was this hydro geological study is is a must to move forward anywhere at all from this point forward. How my question to Director of Operations, how long are we looking at for a hydrological study?
Go ahead.
Thank you through your worship. Um, I think it's in here, but the we're basically looking at six to nine months for that to be completed. Um, it does involve having conversations with the ministry. So we we have to undertake the the investigation, have the conversations with the ministry and with the the Conservation Authority as well at that time. Um, we have to share this information and get a sense of of what, you know, what what our capacity is. How much how much water is there in the aquifer and and what will the impacts be as we as we reach further towards longer term and and the numbers increase? So it's it's getting that detail and making sure that we do it right and and making sure that we're pulling our partners, the the ministry and the Conservation Authority along with us. Um, the Conservation Authority currently right now is working on an update to their, some of their their processes. Um, so they they said by the time they're able to to do a final review of this would be towards the end of this year. So that's that's what we would be shooting for is the end of twenty twenty three to complete the hydro G.
Just sorry if I can, just a little clarity, you say they're shooting for a starting point of the end of twenty twenty three?
Uh, no, for the review of of the hydro G. So if we were to undertake the hydro G immediately.
Right.
Um, we would have the information from back from the Conservation Authority by by the end of the year.
Okay.
Because the Conservation Authority is the ultimate.
For for source water protection. So we we have to first go through the ministry in terms of what our aquifer capacity is. But at the same time, the Conservation Authority has their limit as well that we have to address where it's it's a water budget. And and when we exceed that water budget, now we've we've triggered them as well that that we have to work with with both of these groups.
But if I may, thank you. That bodes another question. If we're in the early stages of a hydrological study and we hit our eighty percent capacity, we kind of get a uh, a yellow card, but not a red one. Is that is that fair to say?
That is correct. We cannot exceed eighty percent of our capacity without receiving approval from the ministry. And and when we do exceed the eighty percent, we can bump right up to a hundred percent of our our capacity. And that's that's for both systems, our sanitary and our water. And we would be looking at both at the same time simultaneously. Uh, we can bump up to the hundred percent, but we have to provide a a plan for the ministry and for the Conservation Authority on how we're going to get that back within that eighty percent capacity.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I have Counsel Gurrell and then Counsel Maybe.
Thank you through you, your worship. Um, regarding this study, it obviously has to be done, but I'd like to move forward in this conversation a few years. We're showing here the design short term growth in the graph, table four, not graphic, excuse me, table, table four, short term growth. A hundred and twenty four residential units representing so many people and so on. So all our all our studies are based on that short term. That's the beginning point. Am I correct in that assumption? I think it says that throughout this report.
Uh, our our studies.
When we do, when we do the hydro hydraulic, hydrology report. Uh, yep, that's one, that same one that I was referring to. Uh, we're we're really looking, can we support a hundred and twenty four short term or in the short term? Of that short term number, ninety one are in the Lansdowne East Phase One. So we have, the rest of them are north of the railway tracks. So my question would be, we're surmising that all of this short term planning, see if we have enough water and wastewater capacity. We're looking at ninety one homes or residences being on the south side of the road track in Phase One of Lansdowne East. I know I have heard the words, don't worry, the developer is solid, the developer is on board and so on. So my simple question is, what is the break even number for us to expand over umpteen years? Millions and millions of dollars potentially and likely, frankly. Ninety one homes, is that enough to cover it? Has anybody done the economics, the supply demand, the elasticity of supply here is what I'm getting at? Because are we exacerbating the problem here in town or are we curing the problem in town of the rates? I haven't ever heard that answered. I I understand where table four comes from. It's hoisted on us by the provincial government that we have to have so much land, so much available, dot, dot, dot. But our is that number ninety one in down there, is the developer committed? Or is it going to be twenty? Can't sell them all. Does that exacerbate who pays for all of this likely infrastructure that's coming? I know this is the starting point for the hydro hydraulic, hydrological study, and I get that and that's fine. We'll give you that tick box, but down the road, this this sets into action, millions of dollars potentially worth of action. In fact, I'm going to say a million, over ten. So I just want us thinking long term, who's paying the bill? And does it make it worse while we're trying to make it better for the water rate payers in Lansdowne? I wouldn't mind if we could put together an economic study and and feel confident that that short term hundred and twenty four units accomplishes that. Thanks.
Yep. Thank you through your worship. The one hundred and twenty four lots in the short term growth can be accommodated within our one hundred percent capacity currently. It it puts us up to ninety four percent, ninety two percent of of our rated capacity, which means after we've exceeded the eighty percent, we have not exceeded the hundred percent. The the challenge that we have is that our permit to take water currently will only allow us to go to seven hundred and twenty, which we're running sixty six percent of currently. So once once we bump up over that rate, we've exceeded our permit to take water. And we need to, we need to expand beyond that. In order to do that, we have to undertake the hydro G. Um, so this, the short term growth is accommodated within our one hundred percent capacity for our our rated system currently. Okay, when when we're undertaking the hydro geological study for the village as a whole, we're looking at the long term as well. So we will be looking at what our requirements are for storage, for distribution, for treatment and for treatment of our our sanitary as well. For for all of the systems, long term growth, looking at a thirty year thirty year horizon currently.
I was, excuse me, so if I was really a dullard and really insensitive to this thing, I would say. So the current water could take us to that one twenty four and we could have a number of homes built in Phase One down there. But if we want to go beyond that, if we want to go beyond Phase One, this is where the big money starts kicking in.
Sorry, once we've exceeded the eighty percent.
Yeah, we have to.
We we have triggered that that review. So the short term will trigger the review.
Yep.
But we are still within the rated capacity of our system. But what what I'm saying is that we we can accommodate that, but the longer term is what we're actually designing for. And to the the first step of this is to undertake the hydro G. Because if our aquifer can't handle anymore, it it has a a finite amount of capacity. And if we exceed that capacity, then we don't have the water going in for the water to come back out. So we we need to find what that limit is and we may need may need to make alterations as a result of the capacity of the aquifer or alternative measures to to accommodate the required flows.
So in the future, we're still looking at the possibility of saying no to certain development based upon the millions of dollars that would need to be spent. We haven't arrived at that yet. That could be six, ten years down the road. Uh, we're going to do these studies because we it's a necessity. But at some point, I still haven't seen the economics that says. You know, I what I do see driven by provincial policy, I read it all, uh, driven by provincial policy that's hoisted on the planning departments and infrastructure departments to come up with these plans. And yet, at the end of the day, in a few years' time, the likelihood that there's going to be huge millions of dollars necessary to support this, that hasn't come up. We're just, it's in the background somewhere. Show me an economic study that says based, we put two and a half people per unit here. Surely we can come up with some economic detail, broad strokes that would say, yep, if we put out there a hundred homes uh, down south of the track, stays east, Lansdowne East, how many homes is it going to take down there to realize a benefit financially to each and every unit? Which is what the goal was in the first place for this council. Y'all remember that. It was how can we build more homes to reduce the unit cost per house? And yet, this all gets lost in in the translation of these studies, which I appreciate everyone and I appreciate the hierarchy of how it's going to work. And tonight, we're going to approve that, of course, or pardon me, bring it to council. It's just that I can't feel confident that a developer is sitting, so yeah, don't worry, I can sell X number of homes in Phase East, Lansdowne Phase East. I don't have that confidence. I hear people talk about it. So somewhere down the road, the pedal is going to hit the metal or the rubber is going to hit the road here. And there's going to be a lot of money being asked to be spent. What do we say? No? Or do we say, yeah, don't worry, we have a promise of two hundred and nine homes, residences being built south of the tracks? Really? Okay, thanks.
Counsel Jameson.
Uh, I appreciate Counsel Gurrell has raised this, your worship, to the extent that this study is about the capacity to actually do something. So the point at which we get this study, if it says, you know, we could expand at that stage, I think we will have to ask for exactly what you're referencing, and that is the economics of it. Is it possible, is the feasibility to actually expand and recover the money somehow going to be there? Because right now it's not there at all. But if this study tells us, sorry, guys, you're done, then we know what we have to work with. We have to work with what is existing. But if it says we can move in another direction, that's when we need to do the study, the full economic benefit study, the whole nine yards before a shovel goes into the ground, in my view.
Are you going to give possible numbers at this point or what?
No, I I'm afraid I can't foretell the future. Um, I sorry, if I could just add a comment through your worship. Um, so and I I don't really understand all the complexities of everything in this report, but I think my my comment would just be we, as a township, either need to embrace that we want to have more people live in Lansdowne and to bring any type of industry or much for commercial, we need to provide services and that includes water and sewer. So either we sink the money and to have the services, so hopefully people come because it is a great township to live in, we have a low tax rate. Or we have limited capacity and and then we can't really entice because people aren't going to come invest in growth in the village if we don't have the services, but we need to sink the money to put the service, like we're in a catch twenty two, right? So I understand exactly what your question was, Counsel Gurrell, but I don't know that it's that simple because, I mean, honestly, from just the high level numbers, talking to Dave, like, we're going to have to get grants for this. There's no way that this is that this village can afford to pay for all of this work, right? Um, but I think as a as a municipality, as a council, um, you know, if we want to attract economic development and if we want business like industrial, like any type of any type of business that needs services, um, we kind of have to figure out whether we bite the bullet, put the money in. Hopefully we get grants, we may have to borrow, we may have to look at some imaginative ways to try to figure out how to finance it. But that would be an amazing opportunity to actually bring a lot of growth if we did have those services in place to provide for residential and commercial development.
So and I, thanks, Kate. But I I think the bottom line is here is that we have to do it to service the to ensure we understand whether we can meet the needs of what exists currently right now. And then that's really why it has to be done. The ancillary benefit is whether we have enough water to expand the system, which has always been the hundred, the million dollar question. But in my rough calculation, the average tax or not the average tax bill, I haven't even thought about taxes yet, okay? So forget about taxation. If we added ninety more units to Lansdowne at a hundred and sixty one dollars and seventy seven cents a month for twelve months, over fifty years, which is about where we're at right now with the age of the system, it's an additional eight point seven three five million in the coffers. Now, obviously, there's operating expenses that comes out of that. However, um, it, that's if and if you stretched it over a longer period of time, over seventy years, it was like twelve million, twelve point two, but that's just ninety units. Then that's just the first phase because the developer that has approached this municipality has looked at doing more than ninety units. Now, I fully appreciate Counsel Gurrell's hesitancy in that it's like, it's great that somebody says they want to come and build it. But until we see it and we see the bricks and sticks in the in the ground, it's hard to understand. But then you throw in Director Tyndall's comment is that if we don't have the infrastructure, it will never come. So it's that balancing act that we are tasked to take on. And this being the first step, making sure that we we've got enough water. Everybody needs water. Everybody needs water. We'll sell it to Arizona, yes, if we can get a pipeline through. Um, are there more questions in regards to this? Go ahead, Counsel, maybe.
And I think about Amir through you. And thank you, Madam Mayor, through you. Uh, so as we have talked about, the hydro, hydrological study only pertains to the amount of wallet, water that's available to us to use, correct?
Correct. It's the amount of water.
Yeah.
What it is, is the, the, uh, how the water builds back up underground.
Yeah.
How the aquifer responds to, to the amount of draw from it.
Right, right. Okay, so, uh, potentially there's gonna be another study for other construction and piping and plumbing and pumps and all that that go along with having infrastructure increase. Another assumption is correct?
Correct.
Yep. And then, um, uh, let me get down here. So the other side, side, and it was talked, talked on was grants. But is there federal and provincial funding for water because of the Clean Water Act, uh, that, which aren't grants, but just cash to look after things like a water tower or the infrastructure that needs to go into the ground? And knowing that the developer of any subdivision, it's his cost to put the plumbing in the ground to then be hooked up to the municipality. So that cost is, is theirs, not ours, but servicing it and feeding it and taking the waste out is ours. So as well as the, the curb stops are his too, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so, so we do have some value there if the con, if the, uh, developer comes in and puts the infrastructure in, so we're able to, to, uh, not have that expense, but the big thing is having federal or provincial money that can come in behind us and put up a new water tower as we're already indicating we need. So it's some more studies, you know, to make sure that we've got the volume for that large number, which is almost three hundred, potentially more homes in our future. So I think we need to just go ahead and keep biting the bullet and get this one done because we need to have that growth. No different than the broadband. We need it just as equally as bad. So we need to kind of get them all in, in place.
Go ahead. Uh, you go ahead.
So we, at, uh, at Good Roads, we had a meeting with, with the minister. And, uh, we inquired about any upcoming grants for water and sewer because of Bill twenty-three and, and the amount of growth required over we heard the presentation from, uh, from the premier.
It's over five years.
And it's over five years, but they're projecting five hundred thousand people coming into the country every year. Five hundred thousand people. That's a, that's a ton of people and they have to go somewhere. Um, so we, we inquired about this, you know, you want, you want more homes and you want people to come here. But we're, we're not alone in this. There are other municipalities going through the same thing where their infrastructure is, is out of date at this point and can't accommodate, you know, the, the required growth for Bill twenty-three and, and whatever else is coming down the pipe. So it, it was indicated that they are working on something and they do plan to, to provide something to, to support municipalities in this, in this aspect.
Oh, there was a, um, not to get ahead of ourselves in the, in the agenda, but there was a comment made by Premier Ford at the, uh, Good Roads comment, or conference. His comment was that I believe it was a hundred and eighty-six billion that will be spent over the next five years um, into, dumped into infrastructure. However, they've been waiting, like, waiting patiently because of the feds have not, because they had a matching program previously and they have not announced anything yet. So they're, they're they're trying to maximize their dollars here in the province and they're actively in talks with the federal government. It seems that sorry, this siren going off, I apologize. Um, I just wanted to make sure it wasn't in this building. Um, anyways, uh, the, the main thing being is that if they can't wait forever, however, if they do announce more money at federal level, it will mean bigger, larger projects in order to come forward um, for us and will give us other opportunity, not just for water, wastewater, but other projects that we may need to fund as well. Sorry. Go ahead, Counselor Fody.
Thank you, worship through you. Um, I'm looking forward to this hydro G study. I like your terminology. It's a little less tongue-twisting. Um, just a little history. Counselor Lackey's much younger than I am, but he can relate. Um, back in the late seventies, early eighties, Lansdowne was that close to exploding with growth on the west side. That faltered. We won't point any fingers to how and why, but it faltered. The choice was there and it faltered. And here we are, taken fifty years later to come back around to another opportunity. But at least the hydro G study will give us, perhaps it'll come back and say, you're tapped out now, which will nullify any other discussion we need to have. But it'll be interesting to see what our opportunities are and that's what this will provide. I just had to throw on a little history. When you get old like myself, you can, you can draw back on a little bit of knowledge. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I think that we've had this discussion to death at this point, so all those in favor of the motion at hand, please signify. And unanimous. So that passes. So the hydro geological study, uh, will come to council for approval and then the director will move forward at that time. Um, how are we doing, council? Do we need a break? We, we do. We need a, a refreshment break. So it is eight oh seven. If we can come back at eight fifteen and then we'll reconvene at eight fifteen. Thank you.